Okay. So, I had a request from a couple of residents that we take masks off while we're speaking. So, I was just making sure everyone was more than six feet away from me before I did that. So, welcome. Thanks for coming. I see we have, we're well distributed. So, we do have a couple of new residents. You may have met, are the DeSantos here? No. Okay. But Mr. and Mrs. DeSanto moved in. And then Joan Lapham, we had our closing. She hasn't moved in yet. She's looking to move in in September. So, that's exciting. And I know Cindy knows her. Probably a couple of you know Joan. And then we do have another closing coming at the end of the month, so I'll wait to announce that until next, next meeting. COVID update. I really, other than opening the dining room, which was, yes, Chris is very happy. I'm sure many of you are very happy, too. Other than opening the dining room very safely, and hopefully everyone's continuing to be safe, I don't really have any updates, but I would open it up for questions if anyone has any questions. Or concerns. How's everything going in the dining room? I'm sorry? Nope. Okay.
Too complicated.
It's, it's too complicated. Okay. Well, so flow of traffic and masking and so from a COVID protection perspective, hopefully all is going okay. But if you have any concerns, let us know. And Barbara Rudeman update. So, I did just speak with her yesterday. Let's see, she, she gave me a list of things to talk with you about. First of all, she wanted to say that she appreciates all the cards and well wishes. She, it, it just, you know, brightens her day to get those, so she really appreciates those. She is doing better. She's getting a lot stronger. She told me she is not consecutively, but walking up to two miles a day in pieces. So, and I know that's the, you know, the best thing for recovery, so she's, she's doing really well. She's anxious to get back to work. She's anxious to see all of you and all of us. But she has finally learned that you can't rush the healing process. So, she's taking her time and every time she asks me for something work-related, I say, Barbara, you're supposed to be recovering. So, she really does miss it, though, and so hopefully we'll have news of her returning soon. We don't have that yet. We don't know when. Any messages you'd like me to pass along when I talk to her next time? Talk to her about once a week. And then memory care. So, the Memory Care Capital Campaign Committee met last week and I think it was last week, the weeks still go by so quickly. So, just as a reminder, Bobby Braswell is our, is he in there?
Yes.
I can't see him, but he's in there.
He is.
Bobby is our resident co-chair of that committee. And then Anne Chevalier is also on that committee, as is Sunny Buckman, for those of you who know her. She is on the committee from afar and joining by phone or WebEx or whatever she can do. So, she's been great as well, and it's nice to hear her voice, too, for those of you that know her. So, they are, we are starting to plan a kickoff of that campaign again. We put it on hold as a lot of things were put on hold for COVID. But we are planning on doing a kickoff for that campaign soon among residents. So, you may be hearing from one of them or myself. And then dining construction. So, I really, I know some folks have asked about this. I really don't have an update just because we haven't had a lot of time to spend on that. We do, the architect has had a little bit more time, so they've been running a few scenarios. And so, we just need to meet with them virtually and try to come up with something and a way to communicate those with all of you to get some input. So, we're working on it. It's just going a little slower, so that will probably be pushed off. We really don't need to make sure that we have that additional dining seating until we actually have the expansion. So, as I mentioned last time, the expansion construction start is now being put off until spring, which is actually a good time to start construction since we can't really start until probably winter, not a great time to start construction. So, we'll be putting that off until spring. So, we do have a little bit of time on that, but I was asked, so I thought I would bring that up. Any questions for me? Okay. I will be back at the end. Cindy, are we reading minutes today?
Yes, ma'am. Resident Advisory Council, August 4th, 2020. Members present: Pat Carr, Lloyd Diamantis, Florence Handen, Cindy Hess, Cindy Hoyt, Bob Carplees, and Joyce Smith. Staff present: Andrea Hebert. Last month's minutes were approved as written. A question was raised about a daughter from Colorado of a deceased resident being able to get into the building. Andrea said Colorado is not on the list of states requiring quarantine, and with strict precautions, we are allowing people help with moving in and out of the Glen. Not all the air conditioner filters have been replaced. Andrea said that they will be, but we were waiting for a delivery of the right type. It was noted by one resident member that the flipper system does not always work. She noted a couple of instances where the flipper may have been down before a resident opened the door. Andrea will follow up. It was pointed out that not everyone is wearing their masks correctly. Andrea said that staff reminds those who aren't and encouraged council members to do the same. If a member sees a long dog leash, they should tell Andrea or John. A question was brought up about allowing the outsides of the windows to be washed this year. Andrea indicated that Nick was in the process of lining up this service, and it would be allowed since the vendor would be outside. In response to a question about indoor projects, Andrea said they were behind where they'd like to be because of other projects and COVID-19. She will update everyone at the August town meeting. Council members were asked to encourage their area residents to add their photos and bios on Touch Town if they have not already done so. Contact Cory. Cindy Hess, Secretary.
Maybe. There we go. Hello, everybody. Just a couple transportation updates, and I want to talk about the mail a little bit. Let me start there. The goal was to hopefully have USPS back in the building and delivering mail to the boxes like we were going to do before. Unfortunately, due to health and safety concerns, we just want to make sure that they can screen and tempt themselves before coming in the door. We're not certain of that yet, so we're going to hold off, and we're going to continue to deliver mail to your door until we're certain that we have someone safe coming in the building delivering your mail. So, we'll keep you posted once we hear more on that. We are still only offering transportation for medical appointments only. If you do have a special request, you certainly can still call myself or Reception and make the request, and we can have a discussion about what our possibilities are to help you out, or if we can find another solution for you if we can accommodate. We are offering our Monday routine runs, as I mentioned last month. That's continuing. So, if you're looking to get out for some grocery shopping, we are doing it Mondays for two different runs to Hannaford and Price Chopper only at this time. And again, you can sign up with Reception if you're interested in going. We also still have Donna Slack, who's purchasing and running groceries for residents as well. So, if you are in need and would prefer not to go out, that is still an option. All you have to do is contact myself or Renee or Reception, and we can get you the information you need to follow up with Donna. Reception hours will remain the same. So, business hours here, 8:00 to 7:00 p.m., weekdays at the Glen and Terrace. And then on the weekends, 9:00 to 4:00 here at the Glen, 10:00 to 4:00 at the Terrace. And we also have someone stationed at the receiving area both weekend days as well. Next, I wanted to talk about the resident-run Resident Biography Book. I know a lot of you are probably already familiar with it, but for those who are not, I wanted to give you a look at it. This is in our library here. Looks like this if you haven't seen it before. And if you haven't looked at it, definitely go check it out. It's a great way to get to know your fellow residents, especially if you are new here. We've sort of revamped the process on how we gather that information, so I'll kind of start from the beginning, and then I'm going to bring Pat Dallas up to kind of clean me up and fill in the gaps if there are any. When you first moved into the Glen, you typically will sit down and give a lot of biographical information during that process. Before, what we were doing was we'd have Pat or another member of the residency here find you to ask very similar questions, to do it just for the biography book. Well, we've sort of kind of combined that into one process, so you're not being asked the same questions twice. So, we're going to use the information from your move-in along with those initial pictures. Now, this is all with your permission. This is something that either Pat or a member of management has in the past gotten permission from you, or we got permission when you moved in. So, it isn't something that, you know, you wouldn't know about before you went in the book. But we take that information, I, you know, clean it up a little bit, and then it ends up in the resident biography. It's in alphabetical order, and again, it's a great way to get to know you and your fellow residents. Pat, why don't I bring you up, and we can kind of clean up a couple things?
Sure. I guess we have to put all this on.
All the way around.
Okay. Okay. Yes, like John said, over the years, we've tried different things. I've met with a lot of you, most of you probably, for information, but recently I found out that some of you newer people were already giving the information to somebody else. And I thought, well, we don't have to both ask. So, John and I have worked it out together so that if you agree, then not only some information about you, but your picture also is put on a form similar to what we've had before. And I agree with John, sometime when you have a minute, and a lot of you aren't going very far right now, you might want to just double-check what is in there. If you want to change anything, just let me know, and we'll get information added. Also, it's years and years ago, the whole book went missing for a while, and we were having a hard time trying to figure out how to get all the data in. But now it's in the computer cloud. However, that's pretty simple if you want to change things.
I have a question.
Sure.
Some of the recent bios are very brief. There's very little information.
And that's by choice.
Okay.
By choice.
Okay.
The person themselves have written it, either to me until recently and/or now. It's, what we did was we combined the form that I was using with the form that the new residents are using now. John and I worked this out together. So, by choice, people can just put, well, they don't have to do it at all. It's all voluntary anyway. And so, there will be some who have been here for a while that you won't see any biography, but it's, that's why.
And also, too, feel my meat jumping in.
Sure.
If, if you do go back there and you see that your bio is brief and you'd like to add more information, that's kind of what Pat was getting at, is find me, find Pat. We can update that very easily. It's all stored. And again, I'd love to have more information there. I really would. So, please come to us with whatever you think you'd like to have in the book, and we'll make arrangements to change the form.
Why don't we leave this to Touch Town? Because today, a lot of bios and a lot of information just not available in Touch Town. It would be nice for those who are new to Touch Town.
I'm going to let Cory chuff on that one.
I'll hop in and add to that, so.
Okay, then I'm going to have to.
So, when we first started Touch Town, the app, everybody that had a biography in the book, Reception was tasked with taking those paper biographies and adding them into the electronic format of the app. And as more people have moved in, during my orientation, I go over the app, I go through adding your bio there, but there hasn't been one receptionist or one person who has been taking those paper biographies and adding them in. All I can do is press upon people to add it to the app. We are certainly, over the, oh, God, probably 10 years that we've been using Touch Town, and now three of the app, we have certainly gotten more people who have moved in who are tech savvy, who are looking for that. So, my goal is, and Andrea had mentioned it earlier or in the minutes, was that when I am back from vacation, I will start reaching out to everyone to see if they don't have an app and a picture or a bio and a picture in the app to add it onto there. The thing you have to remember is that is only in-house. Even though it's online, it's only, only residents can see that information. It does not go out to the World Wide Web. It's not there out on a cloud that someone can hack in and see where you went to college or what town you were born in or any of that. So, if anyone's concerned about that, and if you have any more questions about the security of that, you can let me know, too.
Okay. I did notice when I've looked at the biography book in the past, and these may not be recent new member, new residents, that there are a lot of people who are not interested or they just don't want to do anything on computers at all. And so, I think having both options is a good way to do it. For people who want to just look at paper in a book where they can turn the page, that's one option. For people who don't want to do that, then what Cory has explained, that's another option, too. But a lot of us really didn't know about all these different possibilities, so good way to publicize this both ways.
Thank you. I don't have an agenda in front of you guys, so what I'm going to do is because, is it okay if I go with Renee's, just so I can?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Because Renee is not here today, she had left me a couple notes I want to go over with you. Please bear with me here. So, she wanted to present some information on voting, the absentee ballot process. Absentee ballot apps can be picked up at the front desk. We do have them printed out, and they're available here, or you can get them with Renee when she's back in the office. You have seven days for early voting, which starts Saturday, October 24th through Friday, October 30th. Hours are Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 to 2:00; Monday and Wednesday, 9:00 to 8:00; Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. On absentee ballot request form, you have to choose either temporary illness or permanent. Do not say due to COVID or pandemic. That is not a valid or legal response at this point. That's what she's instructing. There may be a drop box for ballots or a mail option. The commissioners are still working on the details and decisions on that, so she will keep you posted as we get that information. We also wanted to cover some recent scam reports that we're seeing. I personally have received 20 or some odd phone calls to my own personal cell phone lately asking for my social security number, saying that I'll get a refund check of some kind if I give that information. I'll just reiterate, I'm sure everybody is aware, do not give your social security number out over the phone. They won't ask for it like that. So, it's a pretty good tipping point that that's a fraudulent call. Apple has had some issues with phishing or trying to gather information from you over the phone. If a representative calls you and states that they're from the Apple company, asking for your Apple ID and password, hang up the call immediately. Again, they would not request that information over the phone. And you can report phishing to Apple through email at reportphishing@apple.com if you do have an issue with that and you're not sure what to do with those phone calls. Rule of thumb, come find us first before you give any information. We'll be glad to help you through it. Another one, another scam targeting our COVID fears. The caller will say that you may have been exposed to the COVID virus. The caller then goes on to say that you need to be tested within 72 hours, and that a test kit would be mailed to you by then for a fee of $50 to be paid over the phone with a credit card. That's not, that's not a thing. That doesn't exist. If you feel like you have been exposed and are in need of testing, please come find, call us, a member of management staff, and we'll be glad to get you to where you need to go. Other updates, Vile of Life says, please make sure to keep your Vile of Life form up to date. Any changes in doctors, medical, any meds, emergency contacts, or advance directives, please let Renee know. So, we have the file, and it's accurate. Any health alerts or other, other interested in GPS or in-home personal emergency response system, please call and schedule a time to meet with Renee about your options. Open enrollment, October 15th through December 15th. Licensed insurance agents have been calling, and we're, we hope to have some, I'm assuming, by then. So, I'll have Renee follow up for some more details on those last two topics. But biggest thing, those scammer calls, please let us know if you see that, especially internal phone calls to the Glen. Let me know if we're getting those calls in-house, and we can see if we can, you know, block those. But other than that, I think, who's next on the agenda? I'm sorry.
Nick.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I haven't seen him this afternoon, but if anybody sees my little friend John, ask him how the Red Sox are doing.
Nasty, nasty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is Pat Dallas in here, too? Okay, I feel better now.
Something about it.
Other than that, it's going to be nice, short, and sweet. I just want to let everybody know that I've had two people start this week. Chris is in building maintenance. He's working with Brian today, and one of these days I'll get him around to make sure he, we introduce him to you. And we also have Alicia. She just started in housekeeping, and we'll have Terry go around with her and there again, make sure everybody knows her and comfortable with her. They're both very nice people, and I think, I think it's going to go well. As far as AC filters go, all of the ones up in the main building have been changed as of, I'm going to say as of this morning, because that's when Brian told me. And window cleaning, I'm not sure when that's going to be scheduled, but it's going to be in the very near future. I have the guy that's done it for the last, I'm going to say, four or five years. He's going to be available soon, but I'm also meeting with a couple people within the next two days, just to freshen up the prices, just to keep everybody honest. And hopefully, we can get that, that scheduled by September. Let's see. And the last thing I have, and I know I said this at the last, last one of these meetings, is between the inside of the building and the grounds, everything looks great. So, get out there and take a look at it. Pick some of those flowers. Get them before Joyce Smith does, because she's just, she's just going to put them in a vase, and we're all going to admire them in here. So, we might just, we'll go right to the source and look at them outside. Any questions or anything for me? And the next one is Chris. Is Chris?
Not here.
He's not here. Okay. Well, speaking for Chris is Chris.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you can see, I don't have a large agenda, just letting you know the, the things that are going on. And we'll have some more activities and things scheduled next week. But there are, with the dining room reopening, we're going to try to do at least one themed event every month. So, this Friday is breakfast for dinner. So, those of you who want to come down and participate, wear your pajamas and your bunny rabbit slippers and your bathrobes like we've done in the past, because that's how the staff's going to be dressed, too. And we'll celebrate having breakfast for dinner as something fun to do that we've done before. I'll skip over Labor Day for a second and, and say the next one coming up, which is on 9/11, is we're going to have a chuck wagon barbecue. So, so bring down your dude hat and your cowboy boots and your jeans or, or whatever you want to wear to a chuck wagon event, and can enjoy that. For those of you who haven't come, which is quite a few so far, we're running about 30% people who eat in the dining room, and about 70% are still eating in their rooms. And so far, it's gone very well, so hopefully the 30% can convince some of the rest of you how safely you can eat in the dining room and enjoy the socializing that goes along with it, that makes dining so much fun. So, we're looking forward to slowly seeing more people come to the dining room, and we'll try to come up with some more events to entice you out to do so. And the big one, of course, coming up right now is our annual Labor Day Lobster Fest. So, we are going to be able to do that. We have determined, we've been playing around with the green container, and we figured out that if we leave the head of the lobster off, we can fit the lobster into the container. So, I'm sorry for those of you who really look forward to the head, if you stay in your rooms, but you'll get the whole lobster if you come down to the dining room. And we're working on making sure that we can seal the drawn butter and those things. So, we're going to be able to deliver the meal if you want to stay in your room. But again, whether permitting, the patio will be open, and we do, if you've been reading the memos, we will have overflow seating available out here as well as in the dining room. So, if you put all three things together, which is 40 and 16, so we can do 68 residents combined using the patio, the grill room, and the dining room. So, there is plenty of room to be socially distanced and still have fun if you want to come out and enjoy Labor Day. So, those are the three main things going on. And does anybody have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes.
The memo I just got, it says we're supposed to be getting new order forms that came with the memo, but I didn't get any.
That's because most of the people, the cottages just call in, but I'll bring you some before the meeting's over. And they are available on the, I have them stacked up on the desk right outside the dining room, and the receptionist has them as well, but I'd be glad to give you some personally. Most of the cottage people just call, which is fine. Save them a trip.
We need to know what it says on it.
It just indicates whether you're eating in the dining room, whether you're picking up, or whether you're having it delivered, and it shows the timeframes for when those things happen. Other than that, it's the same. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. Who's next?
Cory.
Last but not least.
Last but not least. All the way down from the mountain. My special appearance. It's not even typed this time. It's my scrawled by campfire the other night. So, hopefully, I remembered everything. All right. Thursday, tomorrow, this Thursday at 6:30, Bella is doing a paint and sip. When I checked this morning, there were six out of 10 spots. You will be able to socially distance and still do some painting and sipping, so. Then Tuesday, the 25th, at 6:30, our own Wes Dingman is doing a second talk on the current climate change. And in September, I don't have the exact date in front of me, he will be doing a talk on primates, so. And there is room in that one, I believe, as well to sign up. So, that's a week from tonight, next Tuesday. Wednesday night, the 26th, next Wednesday, at 7:00, Heather Richards will be here for an outdoor concert. She's a little bit more country, bluesy, kind of old Patsy Cline type. So, and a lot of times, her boyfriend comes and plays with her. Keep your fingers crossed. We have been two-for-two on the weather with our outdoor concerts, so hopefully. And just as a reminder, even though there's really not a cutoff, please sign up so we make sure we have enough seats. Last concert, we had quite a few people that just came out and showed up, which is great. I don't want to turn people away since we've been limited in sizing, but we want to make sure that we have a seat so that no one is purposely sitting on the grass. And then Thursday, the 27th, at 1:00, we will be doing our annual strawberry social that we usually do this time around in August. That will be between the grill room, the dining room, and the patio, so that hopefully we can, you know, meet enough requirements to socially distance, so everybody can take off their masks and eat. As Chris said, between those, hopefully, we can fit about 60. And, and if you don't want to stay, you can always come and grab it to go, so. And we're going to be doing a couple more of those things, because as the weather gets colder, we can't move things outside. We're going to be kind of doing like pop-in parties, where you can pop in, get your thing to go, and go find a nice socially-distanced spot throughout the community. to go, and go find a nice socially-distanced spot throughout the community to, to eat or drink. On, also on Thursday, the 27th, at 2:30, we will be starting a new Great Courses series called Play Ball. It is a look at how baseball has progressed to become America's favorite pastime, and the Great Courses classes that we've been doing so far have had really good turnouts. So if you want to do that, make sure you sign up for that as well. That is all I had off the top of my head by campfire. Anyone have any questions for me? Yes, Audrey.
How early do we have to sign up, or can we sign up for these classes?
So Audrey asked how, when you can sign up for classes. What we did with all of the COVID stuff is, because I didn't want people signing up if it was, you know, a 12-part series or a multi-week series, I didn't want someone to be able to sign up for the whole thing and take the spot, since we were limited to 10. So it is set to five days, whether you're registering yourself on your own computer, smartphone, tablet, computer, whatever, five days. And if you come to Reception, Reception is only allowed to sign you up five days in advance as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone have anything else for me? Wow. And Cory gets to go back on vacation. All right. Think of anything for me? Well, thanks, everybody, for coming.